I'd like to welcome everyone to the November 18th, 2009 Town Council Workshop. And I'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome all of you this evening. And with the council's indulgence, I would like to allow the group from Link Together to go first, so they can get home and do their homework and everything else they have to do. So with that, Ree, would you like to start, or do you have?
I am Hannah Hart. The Service Learning Group has worked hard since June. We've raised $1,006.68, and we plan to purchase a picnic table with that money, too, to go along with the two benches that we already have money for. We would like to thank you for having us here to update you on what we are doing. Raymond Goodman will start to tell you what we did to raise the money.
For the month of August, we took turns spending a Saturday morning at our lemonade stand at the farmer's market and raised a total of $191.70. We also had our pictures displayed to let people know what the park looked like before we started working on the park and what our goal is for it to look like when we are finished. Jacob Grisbaski will tell you about some other fundraisers we held.
We held the scarecrow contest at Arbor Park, candy bar sales, and the fall craft fair. At each event we held, we had our posters up showing our work so far. Also, at each event, we had a donation container. We collected $295.89 in donations. Debitt Hines would like to tell you about a way we hope to get seed money for future events.
Last June, we submitted a venture grant for $1,000 for seed monies for our fundraisers. The grant council contacted us in September and made suggestions on what we needed to fix, such as getting donations for prizes instead of giving money prizes. Since we hadn't heard from them when we started planning our summer early fall events, we had already completed their suggestion. We received donations from Hannahford and Shaw's for our lemonade stand. Britten Jones will tell you about our scarecrow contest.
For the scarecrow contest, we had originally planned to give money as prizes. When we hadn't heard from the venture grant, we made a list of businesses in our town. We wrote an informational sheet telling people about us and what we are doing. We took them to local businesses and received prizes for them, from them. Madison Foster will tell you about our changes to the venture grant.
Since we had already planned our fundraisers that we had included in our budget, we couldn't ask them for the startup money to hold those fundraisers. We revised the venture grant by coming up with new fundraisers, their budget, and a timeline for when we would be holding them. Peyton Catalano will tell you about the fundraisers that we are planning to hold.
The fundraisers we are planning to hold are a spring craft fair, plant sale, winter carnival, a scoundrel hunt, a Valentine's gift workshop, and a town show. We are hoping to hold the winter carnival in the beginning of February with the Valentine's gift workshop the second week. The town show will be in April. The spring craft fair and plant sale in May along with the scoundrel hunt. Julia Hawes would like to talk some more about the town show.
We are planning on holding the winter carnival and the town hall auditorium in the beginning of February. We will be having a food booth and several booths with prizes. We've realized that there is a fee of $130, and we would like to ask if you would be willing to waive the fee where the money is going to improve the Pocket Park. We feel that we have shown that we can be responsible by all of the events that we have held so far. We promise to make sure that we will clean up and leave the town hall auditorium the way that we find it. Alexa Paul Shano will tell about some of our spring plans.
In April, we will be holding our annual spring cleanup of the park. At that time, we hope to be celebrating the grand opening of the Pocket Park. It is then that we will be putting benches and the picnic table for everyone to enjoy. We hope to have a big ribbon cutting ceremony and invite the people who have made donations and helped us beautify this park. It is at the grand opening that we hope to have our spring craft fair selling items such as bird feeders and our plants. Madeline Guyer will tell you about a few other fundraisers that we are working on.
We are working on a quilt raffle to raffle. We have all the squares done and this top is put together. We just need to put the batting on the back and we can raffle it off. We are also working on a point set of sale. The cost of a point set is $16. We're taking orders now with the profits going to Pocket Park. We'll be taking orders until November 30th with the pickup date of December 7th. If you would like to purchase one, there are order forms on the table with Mr. W. We will have in his office after tonight's meeting. Julia Hess would like to tell you about some other projects we are working on.
This fall, we helped to clean Trotter Park. We picked up the brush, trash, and trees and helped to put the fence back up. Next week, we are making pies for the senior citizens at the Sunshine Center. We also helped Janice Rosa by putting Velcro on the back of pictures of veterans for their Veterans Day ceremony. We would like to thank you for having us here to update you on what we are doing. Do you have any questions?
First, I'd like to just say that that's a very nice job you all just did. Very nice. You should all be proud. And with that, I'll open it to the councilors if they have any questions. Councilor Quox.
Can I place an order for a point set? Okay. I would like one. What colors do you have available?
Red and white.
I would like one red and one white. Okay? Oh, great. Very good. And a very ambitious agenda, and it sounds great.
Any other councilors? Councilor Dickens.
Do we have to make a motion to waive the fees for them to use, or does it have to be at a separate time?
Yes.
Usually, I don't allow motions at workshops, but I guess we'll...
All right, make a motion slide. ...waive the fee to use the town facilities for your fundraiser.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Administrator Winowski, will you call for the vote, please?
Sure. Councilor Carr?
Aye.
Councilman Minutelli?
Aye.
Councilor Botteman?
Aye.
Councilor Quox?
Aye.
Councilor Dickens?
Aye.
Chairman LaBranche?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. We waive the fee for you. Any other councilors? I believe that, and I'll refer to you just this once, as Mr. W. has something to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the kids will recall, or hopefully most of them will, that about, probably a little bit over a year ago now, a shelter sort of appeared in Pocket Park, which kinda put a kibosh on, I guess, the Christmas tree decorating that was going to happen there. And I have some really good news for everybody, and that is that by the end of this month, the shelter will be removed from the Pocket Park. And if the kids want to get together and we can get a tree and decorate it for Christmas, that's a total reality at this point, so if you're interested in that, we are willing to do it.
Okay. Is there any chance that Mr. W.'s fine can be waived?
Oh, yes. You know, when you're at $777 trillion, you have to work a lot of hours to pay that off.
What do you think, Julia? You gonna waive his fine?
It's off.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Give a second to that motion.
Okay. If there are no other questions from the councilors, I'll let you guys go home and get done whatever you need to do.
Get ready for bed.
Get ready for bed, y'all.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, they're so cute. I love them. I love that kid.
Yeah, we're gonna...
Yeah.
Max, Max, exit.
Thank you. Of course, I'll probably have one in my mailbox.
Thank you, Roseanne.
Yeah, you did.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the acceptance of $23,000 from the Department of Justice for the Police Department. And I believe Chief Seer is here to answer any questions that the council may have. Chief?
I don't need this. I'm studying that. I came before the council back in the spring, right after President Obama started the Recovery Act. There was some funding that was pre-approved for law enforcement agencies in Rockingham County and throughout the country. And we were pre-approved for $23,000 to be used for infrastructure improvements, electronics equipment, things like that. And our plan was to implement the mobile data terminals, like computers in the cars with a uplink to the state police headquarters and the record system. And I came before the council and discussed what we were planning to do. And I believe now that we've been formally approved for the grant and we actually have the money available to us to go after it and get it, all we have to do is present them with the bills. We researched the council minutes and found that no vote was taken to actually accept the grant. So that's what we're here for tonight. It's a vote from the council to allow us to accept the funds and expend them.
My rules of procedure going right out the window tonight, huh? Councilor Minutelli.
Should I make a motion? Make a motion to accept the Department of Justice grant in the amount of $23,000?
Second.
Any discussion of questions? Councilor Quox.
Chief, was there any strings attached to this? I know you hear a lot of people on TV saying they didn't accept certain monies from the government with the stimulus because they would be required to do other things that would cost them money in the long term.
There were some things with, you could spend some of the grant money on personnel and things like that, and you had to agree to keep these people on afterwards. So that's why we went for some one-time cost equipment to get us up and running. There were no strings as far as any length of time that we have to keep the equipment or anything else like that. I do have quarterly reports I have to file on the goals that we established for the usage of the equipment and how well it's working. So I will have to report back, but there's no financial...
How long and how often will you have to report, as long as you have the equipment?
I believe three years, we're gonna do this on a quarterly basis. As a matter of fact, I've already filed one quarterly report saying we haven't done anything yet.
But if you had hired personnel, you would have to keep those people on...
We'd have to keep them on a period of time, yeah.
So you're using equipment instead of personnel?
Yes.
Okay.
And it really wasn't enough to hire a person.
Yeah, right. Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any, do we have to have any matching funds?
No.
At all? Okay. So it's just clean. All right. That was my only question.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask Town Administrator to call for the vote, please.
Councilor Carr?
Aye.
Councilman Minutelli?
Aye.
Councilor Botteman?
Aye.
Councilor Quox?
Aye.
Councilor Dickens?
Aye.
Chairman LaBranche?
Aye. Motion carries seven, zero, uh, six, zero, I'm sorry. At this time, with the council's indulgence, I think the chief may be here to also discuss item number, well, it's item eight.
C.
C. The ordinance. So if the council doesn't mind, I'd like to allow him to just give a brief overview as to what the existing ordinance may be, what it entails, why we're at the point that we're at. Any objection to that?
Nope.
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
We have an ordinance in place that prohibits currently bicycles on the sidewalk. And this expands that a little bit to cover the items that weren't included in the previous ordinance, including scooters and skates and skateboards and rollerblades and things like that that are becoming more popular since the original ordinance came out. I also heard some discussion, one of the meetings that I didn't attend, regarding the gathering of people on the sidewalks and why that was included in the ordinance. And to provide some history, about 10 or 12 years ago, we had a group of young people that were hanging out in the downtown area. We had a lot of vandalism we were dealing with on a regular basis. A lot of the business owners and patrons of the businesses downtown were complaining that you couldn't get into Morelly's because there were 10 kids standing on the sidewalk and there were kids standing in the doorway. And they addressed, at the time, the council addressed it by passing the ordinance, which gave the police department a little more horsepower in order to move the kids along and keep the downtown cleaned up. We've got a completely different generation of kids at this point. I don't see the hanging around, and we don't have any vandalism problems that we were having 10 or 15 years ago. The ordinance is nothing different. We're not asking for anything different from what was in place. As a matter of fact, I don't know that today, it may not even be necessary to have the ordinance, although if that problem ever arises again, we'd be back in front of you to see if we could reinstitute it if it was necessary. I mean, the section about the congregating on the sidewalk really wasn't added because there was a problem at this time downtown. And certainly, that's not designed to drive the patrons away from the benches and the tables and things that are down there now, since the downtown's been redeveloped.
Okay, thank you, chief. Any councilors have any questions in this regard? Councilor Quox.
Chief, if, say, for instance, Morelly's has got three or four kids hanging around right in their steps. If we strike this portion about sidewalk obstruction, would they still have the right? Because then it would just fall under loitering. And they would have the right to call you, the police department, and you'd be able to legally ask them to leave?
Well, this really is the loitering statute. The loitering and prowling statute that the state has is a little more specific to people who are hanging around a place with the idea of committing a crime. Kids just basically hanging out on the sidewalk is not, even though that's the common knowledge definition of loitering, is not really what is covered in the statute. So this was the loitering statute for us.
So if we do strike this, so you're recommending that we strike this from the...
I'm not making a recommendation one way or the other.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't, I just was trying to offer some explanation. You know, you could certainly leave it in. It makes no difference to us. We haven't had to enforce this section of the ordinance for quite some time. So I don't see that as a huge problem for us down there now. Either way, it's fine to leave it in, from my perspective, or you can take it out.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? I guess at this point, we, as a council, should decide whether, A, we just keep the existing ordinance in place, or B, we adopt these changes. What does the council feel? Do we want to adopt these changes? Do we want to strike, I believe would be 11.2.7.4 would be the part that we would strike. Councilor Botteman.
Well, I think we, the whole idea of this ordinance was to include skateboards, right? Because currently, the ordinance just has bicycles, right? So we'd want to include skateboards. So, I mean, I'm fine with striking the portion about sidewalk obstruction, and, you know, we have the addition of the skateboards. But I think at the last meeting, Pete Witham had a, I think, a legitimate concern about the definition of scooter or something. I mean, we just need to make sure that we're not inadvertently including something.
Disability or handicap situations.
Right.
Chief, if someone were to cite an individual on one of these mobile scooters that sometimes people need to get around, what would be your reaction to that, I guess?
Well, part of being a good police officer, I think, is be able to use some discretion and some common sense. I think it's tough to try to define every possible type of vehicle you might find on the sidewalk. However, I can't imagine that I would have a police officer that would cite somebody who was in a power chair or something like that for being on the sidewalk with it. Certainly, that's not the intent of the ordinance. And I'm certain that the district court would not think that that was a reasonable interpretation of the ordinance. But you do have vehicles like segways, and you do have other types of electronic carts and things like that that you may want prohibited on the sidewalk. So I think I'd be careful, you know, being too defined. I can tell you, as long as I'm chief, there'll probably be no enforcement of wheelchairs and power scooters on the sidewalks downtown.
Councilor Carr?
I was going to say that I understood the comments that were brought up at the last meeting, but I also don't see any problem with leaving this in. I don't, I trust in the police discretion to, I don't think they're going to be, as it came up in the meeting, chasing people away after church on Sunday if they're standing around three or four or five or six talking. That's, I can't imagine that happening, so...
And I don't believe that's what the intent of the ordinance was to begin with, when it was written, even then.
Councilman Minutelli?
I was going to agree with the sentiments expressed by Councilor Botteman. I have no problem striking 11.2.7.4 about the sidewalk obstruction, based on the information we've heard, which is, you know, it was a portion of an ordinance that was enacted, you know, at a time where there was a problem, and now the problem doesn't exist anymore. The police department still has, you know, general police authority with respect to state statutes. So I don't think they really, my opinion is, I don't really think they need it to do their job unless I hear otherwise from the chief. I'm okay striking that and leaving it as drafted. I don't think we need a specific, in the definitions section, I don't think we need a specific disclaimer that the ordinance doesn't apply to, you know, legitimate, you know, handicap vehicles or whatever. I mean, we can add that in if the council feels it's necessary, but I don't, I think, as chief points out, that's not something that anyone that's in a wheelchair is gonna have a problem with, with the police department, so...
Councilor Botteman.
Just in response to what Councilman Minutelli just said, 11.2.7.3, the last sentence, does say, "This shall not apply to persons with wheelchairs due to physical disability." So maybe we just change wheelchairs or other motorized devices due to physical disabilities.
It could be a motorized wheelchair.
This does not apply to persons with physical disabilities, period. Wipe everything else out of it.
Yeah, I mean, if that's a concern, but I don't...
I mean, I don't think it's a big concern, but I think it takes away any ambiguity.
I think really, the biggest concern with this ordinance was the next line with the sidewalk obstructions.
Right.
And I kinda have the feeling that the council would like to see that removed.
See the sidewalk obstruction removed?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Then what I would suggest, if there's no other questions or comments, I would just suggest that we get this redone, strike that from it, and we'll vote on it at the business meeting. And basically, hopefully, we're at a full council then, and we can pass this or exit.
Would that be considered a substantive change, and you'd have to have another public hearing? We're eliminating one, four, we're eliminating 24% of existing ordinance.
So...
So another public hearing.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so we'll have another public hearing, and then hopefully, we can move this forward and be done with it. That good to the council?
Very good.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next is a public hearing on adoption of RSA 79E, Community Revitalization Tax Relief I guess we do have some people from the public that may want to speak on this, so at this point, at 7:28, I'd like to open up the public comments. Mr. Porterada?
Yes, Porterada, next to the road, New Market. I've been reading papers, listening to you people about this project, you know, the apartment thing. And it seems like every time something comes up, that the question I like to ask first is, how much money are we putting into this project for, using tax money? I mean, it seems like you haven't explained exactly what this is, just a comment on it, you know? But I mean, it seems to me he wants to be tax-free for a while to build these apartments, right?
Mr. Porterada, if I may, let me try to explain it. And the way I understand this is, for example, these buildings are currently, and we'll just use round numbers, say they're giving us $100,000 a year in taxes right now, the buildings that we're talking about, or any building. We'll just say any building, because I know you're talking about the mills, but let's just say any building is giving us $100,000 in tax revenues at this moment. With this RSA being adopted, that doesn't take away the $100,000 that we're currently receiving. What that may do is give the individual an opportunity to go in maybe year one with no increase in his tax that he has to pay to the town. He'll still pay the $100,000, but even though he's made improvements and maybe now it's worth $150,000, he will not be liable for that additional $50,000 in the first year. Maybe in the first five years, depending on how the council would vote on it. The council could say, okay, we'll give you a free ride the first year, then we want 20% in year two, 20% on top of that in year three, and stagger it. But the way I understand this particular RSA is, it's specific to the application. If you walked in and were applying for this, it would be, you know, case-by-case situation. We could say yes, or the council could say yes, the council could say no, the council could put stipulations on it. But realistically, from the way I interpret this RSA, this does not cost the taxpayers a dime. And if I'm wrong, please correct me.
Well, of one point...
Well, it will, it could in future years, but we're not going, the term would be revenue negative. We're not going to be tax revenue negative at any point. We just may not reap all of the benefits immediately. After five years, we will reap the full benefits of whatever the taxation is on that piece of property.
That's only if the council allows it.
If the council, right. And like I say, that's a case-by-case situation.
In the case of when they were going to do the downtown project, we would tell them what they do this project and all these different things they've done downtown, that we were going to get an increase of revenue from these buildings downtown. Has that happened?
Yes.
Yes. Well, I go into the computer a lot, too, myself, and go into the assessment department, you know what I mean? But we're talking about this one project, the mill project. The Eagles, why did we buy the Eagles? Is it for the, because of the apartment, for the mill project? Is it for the, because of the apartment, for the mill project?
It was, the Eagles was purchased basically as part of that project, as was what is now known as a municipal parking lot, the old Rockingham Shoe Facility. Those properties were purchased with the intention of eventually being able to utilize those for future development. The Eagles, the town will receive every cent back. From whoever buys the property, purchases the property.
Now, what property we doing?
The mills. It's part of the mill development. So if someone walks in and pays for the mills today, out of the money that's paid for the mills, 369, I believe it is, comes back to the town of New Market.
Because, you know, a lot of times, some industry comes into town, they don't, they come down, they don't ask for any tax break, they just, you could tell them, well, you're going to get so many parking places, so many different, everything else. In other words, the parking area that they're going to use is still part of the thing that it's almost, he's going to, he don't have to pay for that.
He does have to pay for that. There is, with development, there's a lease on that property.
On parking?
Yes.
Because, I mean, it's going to take a lot of work on that property, I mean, the parking lot, I mean, plowing, doing this and that, everything else.
That's not going to be anything that the town, at least under this particular agreement, that's not anything that the town has to deal with.
If he gets tax relief, how many years will that happen?
The maximum of five, under this.
The property owners will have to take up the cost that we would get from him on that. I mean, the property owners would be paying more for him on that project, what he's going to do, right? But how much, the first year, how much he going to pay, 25%, 30%?
He's going to pay what's being paid, actually, he's going to pay more than what's being paid now on that property, correct?
Yes.
We don't get no figures on anything else, I mean, this and that. I know this came up, when he come up to you and say, well, you know, he wants this tax so forth and everything else, caught you by surprise, because, I mean, it seemed like he said that he needs that, or he won't get no money from the banks or something. Is that true?
I don't know if that was part of the conversation or not. And quite honestly, the one thing that I've tried to stress throughout this whole situation with 79E is, we're not doing this for one person, we're doing it for the town of New Market.
I realize that, but I mean, I'm just saying, no, he's going to have to pay an impact fee, all these different things, like anybody else does, when we come into this town, right?
That's a planning board issue. That's not a council issue, that's planning board. We don't deal with that. But I do have some lights and fairness. Councilor Bottomen.
I'm also.
Administrator Winowski.
I was just going to reiterate. At the present time, with the developer holding the lease to that prop, to the, where the parking is going to go, he's paying on that. He's paying the taxes that accrue on that to the town of New Market. And as the chair said, you know, there's going to be sort of in the short term, you know, the improvements that he makes, it's up to the council. And I think you have to look at it, that there's a district that would be included in 79E. So in the district that the council had before it, it's the historic district that was adopted several months ago by the council. So anybody in that district, whether they're a residential homeowner or any other business along Main Street, wishes to make some kind of improvement, either 15% of the total assessed value, or 75,000, more than $75,000. They could come to the council, present their proposal to obtain the benefit of not having to pay the incremental value on that new assessed value for a period of time. And it's up to the council to make that decision. But, and the goal of it is to give them some relief in order to, A, make that improvement, and B, at least get some payment towards it, and reduce their costs there, but then it comes back to the town as an increase, however that may be set up. In addition to that, there is also a contract that is put together between the town and New Market and whoever the property owner is, that it's recorded at the registry. And basically, if they're, if whoever the property owner doesn't abide by what the council has agreed to with them, you know, that, you know, the, I'm going to do X, and the council says, okay, you're going to do X, and they don't do that, and they haven't done it for, you know, two years, let's say, they're dragging their feet, then the council could say, we're going to take it off, and whatever value that's on that building, you're going to have to pay us back at that point in time. So it's just not giving somebody something, there's also a requirement for them to follow through on that in that period of time.
In other words, you're saying that any property owner can use this program?
If the property is within the historic district, which we consider the downtown area, because the goal of it is to encourage the rehabilitation and revitalization of downtowns, that's what the legislature passed it for, is to encourage communities to get back into their downtown area, as opposed to having sprawl and stuff like that. And many times, and in many cases, a lot of communities, you know, the people look at it and say, well, yeah, I can fix it up, but you're going to come along and you're going to tax me right off the bat. So it was a way of saying, look, we'll give you this incentive for a period of time, fix up your property, we're not going to put a increase, we're not going to increase that new assessed value for a period of time and ease it in. So that way encourages that.
Well, let me go with one more question. Say this.
If I may, I think Councilor Quox also has.
The duration can be five years, or it could be seven, or it could be nine years. Two years, X additional to the five, if they're going to put housing, four years additional, if it's affordable housing, or if it's a building done in the historic district, so it's a possibility of nine years. And then what would happen if they came before us and we, and the council said no to any person? Would that be it?
Can we go to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals?
So they have an option, if we say no, if we decide to do this and we say no, and they're not happy with our decision, then they can go and they can appeal it to the local board or the Superior Court. And so we do not have the final decision on it.
No, I believe that the way that it is written is, the decision is advisory only.
Whose decision's advisory?
Hang on.
It says, "The town council's decision may be appealed either to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals, or to the Superior Court, in the same manner as provided for appeals of current use classifications," and it states the RSA's.
Right, I think she's right. I think the counselor is right in that, you know, the council will make the initial determination under the, you know, to see if the applicant meets the statutory criteria. If the council denies the relief, and the applicant still feels that, you know, that the council made an error with respect to applying the statutory criteria, and thinks that he or she may qualify under the statute, I think they, what we would, I think what 79E does is give that applicant the right to appeal the council's decision, you know, to the Superior Court, or to the land, local land tax board, so, okay.
And also, Mr. Chinberg stood here, and I asked him if he also expected to do the impact fees, and the impact fees would be up to $600,000.
Counselor, that's a planning board issue, that's got nothing to do with the council.
I know, but he, Mr.
And that's the end of the discussion on impact fees.
He asked that question, and it was stated by the applicant here that he would not outrule that.
But I'm asking another question, too. Say after five years, that he only had 50% of those apartments filled, and he lost the extensions, you going to give it to him? I mean, what is the rules on this? I mean, it's a funny discussion.
Well, just to clarify, one point that was made earlier, the additional two years or four years for the project, depending on what the project is, that also is a town council decision. That's not something that just arbitrarily happens, where it's automatically, you get an extra two years.
After a public hearing, too.
Right. So, you know, just for clarification, it's not, it's not in the RSA that it's an automatic two or four years additional, it's a town council discussion. Mr. Porterada, you had another question?
Well, no, I'm just saying, I mean, I know you're talking about, because I just thought maybe this article should have been probably put on the ballot, because it's going to affect all the property owners in town that have no, can't use this program or anything like that. Like, I need a new roof, I need a new heating system, but I can't use this, right?
Again, there's the threshold that you would have to meet, and the threshold is very specific. The substantial rehabilitation means rehabilitation of a qualifying structure, which costs at least 15% of the pre-rehabilitation assessed value, or at least $75,000, whichever is less. So unless you're going to put on a roof that's going to be 15%, more than 15% of your assessed value at the current time, or $75,000, if you were in the district, you wouldn't be able to qualify.
Oh, 15%, I mean, no, I'm just using that as a, you know, alternative, I mean, it's all the property in town, but you said just the historic.
Just the downtown.
Area. What is the historic area? I thought you were, you're going through that program again, what's historical in this town? What area, New Village, everywhere, or what?
It's basically the 108 corridor, if I.
I'm on 108.
Interpret it.
Down to Spring, right to Spring Street.
Downtown area.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that road over there.
Well, I mean, I always thought that if, I am getting a tax break like this, doing this property, that helps them out, but also, it might increase our taxes, because people start moving in, we're going to have to be doing this and that and everything else, and this is going to affect our property, our single homes and everything. And I thought something like that should be done before the voters, but apparently, it's not going to be done that way, right?
It, that's, yeah, that's a council decision. It's a decision of the council, Mr. Porterada. It's not etched in stone that we have to approve it, disapprove of it, or that we have to send it for a warrant article. It's up to the discretion of the council.
Well, okay, but I feel that it should be put up in the warrant article anyway, because I still say, we don't know what's going to happen in the long term on this project. That's what I'm saying.
Councilor Bottomen.
As for the record, I'm absolutely opposed to this, I think as the council members know. Philosophically, I just disagree with it. I don't think a local government should be involved in creating another class of citizens, and those are the people that live in the downtown or have a business in the downtown. There certainly, Mr. Porterada is right in that the taxes that they would pay have to be paid by the rest of the citizens. It may not be a lot of taxes, but it certainly is doing that. You know, and I come from the perspective of, I own a business, and I own a business that has real estate. I just don't think it's a business of government to be doing this. The intention of 79E is certainly to help blighted areas. Our downtown is not blighted. We're in an area, I mean, we're in a, in a time where, you know, the economy is as bad as it's ever been in any of our lifetime, and I think there's one empty storefront downtown. And the other thing is, when we had discussions on this before, we'd discuss about what we could ask of applicants, and, you know, it was pretty much told we could ask applicants for any information we deem reasonable. I don't see it in this document that we can ask for anything. So if it is the council that does decide to pass it, I'd certainly like to see some language in here that gives us the right to ask for tax returns, financial statements, whatever we deem reasonable to, I don't see it in this language.
When you make this final decision on this, will there be a, written up in pages, one, two, and three, everything that's involved in this, in this RSA 79E?
It would follow the RSA.
We have a.
Correct.
And we can see what's in it, what you decide on it, and the public should know actually everything that's in there.
That's his document, right?
Yeah, it would be written up. I mean, you can go right online, as you said, you've gone online numerous times, you can go right there and bring up RSA 79E and find out exactly what the language is on it.
I'm speaking for the other people, too. I go to the senior meeting, and all these seniors say, we haven't seen you on TV for a while, that's not because I'm here. Not because of that, but I'm kind of curious about this, because I think if anybody's coming into town to do the project, good and well, I won't go along, I mean, I'll go along with it, but when you're trying to ask for money from the people, and actually, that's what it almost is, then I say that, I question it, that's all. You people are supposed to be doing it for all taxpayers, not just one.
Thank you, Mr. Porterada. Councilor Quox.
I agree with Councilor Bottomen. I really don't, I'm not comfortable with this at all. The council really doesn't have the final decision. It's helping an area that has had a lot of infusion of money, and from the town, from the downtown TIF, that the taxpayers have not seen relief from, because all that money's been going into the downtown. We've put quite a bit of money into the downtown, and like Councilor Bottomen said, there's no criteria such as the health policy we passed last week that I was extremely unhappy with. There's no criteria here that can protect us, and to make sure we're getting the best benefit, and I am not in favor of this in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment at 7:47. Councilors, what do you propose we do? Do you want to bring it back with a full council for a vote? Do you want to adopt it?
I think we should vote on it tonight.
Councilman Minutelli.
We should, I think we should vote on it. I don't know if you want to vote on it, I'm curious to know what the council's thoughts are with a full council or not, but I'm happy to make a motion to approve this, as, oh, actually, we'd have to bring it back to the business meeting, wouldn't we?
No, we voted on other things tonight.
Yeah, but the order.
It generally goes to the business meeting for.
I'd recommend just putting it on the agenda for the business meeting, then. If we're going to adopt it, adopt it, if we're not, fine. I don't agree with the two counselors that spoke, you know, but I'm happy to, you know, make a motion either way. If you want to entertain one today, we'll do that, if not, I'd recommend moving it to the business meeting.
Councilor Quox.
We voted on other things tonight, why would this have to be moved to the business meeting and not being voted on tonight?
Well, the only thing you voted on was deferring.
Mr. Administrator, please. Thank you.
I would like to vote on this tonight.
Okay, this is my interpretation on it. The things that we voted on this evening to this point were really not debatable issues. I would classify them. To me, this is a major decision by the council, and it would be my feelings that we try to do this as a full council. Now, is someone going to miss the business meeting that's here this evening, that they know of? Everyone plan on being for the business meeting?
When is it?
The December 2nd. That would be my wish. And if the council will oblige me, I'll put it on for the 2nd.
That's fine, I have some, do I still have the floor to bring back in? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I have some editorial changes that I was going to suggest, council can weigh in on them or not. Under the purpose section, in the second, the second sentence, I would, well, it's also a benefit to encourage the rehabilitation and renovation of the, I would strike the word "the," and it says, "Commercial, business, residential, and mill buildings." I would strike "and" in "mill building," because, I mean, to me, that goes to what we've talked about. This is an adoption of, the adoption of this statute isn't project-specific, it's to encourage the rehabilitation and renovation of commercial, business, and residential buildings, so I'd strike the "and" mill part.
Where is that, Steve? Where is that?
It's on the second sentence.
Sixth line, fifth line down from, under purpose.
Right. And then I would strike the word "the," and just say, "as a means of encouraging growth of economic and residential appeal of the downtown." Under definitions, the first sentence, qualifying structure means a building located, not in-within, just strike the "in." And I guess that's it. The rest of this really seems to mirror 79E pretty consistently, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Dickens.
Is it possible, too, on this? Since the biggest issue, and I think this came up in some of our earlier discussions, was that other towns, when looking at this policy, said that they would never do it within a TIF district, were comments, because it's kind of like a win-win, you know? Would it be possible for us to say that this can be adopted as soon as the TIF district is closed? is closed, so that you can't get a double bang for the buck, so to speak, so that it kind of makes it so that, I mean, the district gets closed when? By definition? I guess that's the question.
In the bond speed off.
Which is?
More than that.
Oh, is it? So you don't close it any earlier than that?
No.
It's not when the substantial completion of the project's, okay. My point was that, obviously, the biggest issue is, obviously, one particular project is the sticking point for adoption on this. Well, here's what I have. If, what I would like to see is if this was part of, if we are moving forward with our historical district ordinance, that it would allow people that are making substantial changes to their building because they have to as a tool. That's where I would like to see it happen. Other than that, I don't want to see it just for things. I'm kind of on that. But if someone had to have a, their roof had to have slate back on it, and it's going to cost them $300,000, and it's going to up the value of their, that's where I think this is a great tool. And I don't know if there's any way to mold that around that type of a procedure. Like, because once we open up 79E, it's open for whatever, correct? And there's less limitations. But if it was attached to the historical ordinance, if that does come to fruition and change, then I would be all for it, because it's a tool, because if we're going to, you know, make someone's business potentially closed because they can't afford that new roof, this is that mechanism to help them out if it increases the value of their property. But I don't like it. I think I kind of agree with the two councilors here. But I definitely am willing to have a full council vote, because this is something that's that important. I just didn't know if there's any way to, to kind of mold it around certain types of projects, but if we adopt 79E, it's at the will of the board at that point, regardless. That's my fear.
Councilor Bottomen.
Oh, that was me.
No, you were the two. Counselor Quox.
So do we have a motion on the floor or not?
No.
Not at this point.
Do we need a motion? We're not doing motions, are we?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote on the adoption of RSA 79E, the community revitalization tax relief incentive, tonight.
Second? Second? Discussion, can we table the motion? Is that a light? Can I table the motion to the next meeting?
There's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded.
Tableing.
But I can table the motion, right? Oversees it, so I can table the motion.
As long as you get a second.
Not once it's been seconded, though.
Takes precedent. Tableing takes precedent.
But, I mean, the rules of procedure we adopted did say, you know, as a general rule, we're not, it'd be entertaining motions at workshop.
It's listed here for adoption for tonight.
Right, I mean, I thought, that's what my, I seconded it, but I thought we were not, I thought you weren't taking motions at a, at a workshop.
But the question, if someone makes it seconded, does it become part of the record, and you have to move forward? But then, am I allowed to table the motion? And if there's a second, and we vote on table?
I had to vote on it, if it was on.
And it, why is it listed here as adoption? I mean, it's looking to adopt it this evening. It doesn't say discussion.
It's a public hearing counselor on the adoption. It's listed under the public hearings. We had basically two public hearings, and this is one of them. So, Councilor Bottomen, your light's on.
I think it was on from before, but I guess I, I would rather see the whole council vote on it.
So you would, you'd have to adjut a second.
Well, it could still be voted on, the motion could be voted on anyways, right? This is just a motion to do it, not.
A motion to.
Vote on it tonight.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote.
Counselor Carr.
Aye.
Counselor Minutelli.
Nay.
Counselor Bottomen.
Aye.
Counselor Quox.
We're voting on the motion here.
Your motion was to vote on it tonight. That was your motion.
We're only voting on the motion.
Aye.
Counselor Dickens.
Nay.
Chairman LaBranch.
Nay. Three-three, motion fails. We in agreement to bring this to a full council at the business meeting? Okay, please, put it on the business meeting. Okay, number two has been changed, but I believe we have Mr. Coffey here this evening
Thank you. I got a little handout, I'll hand out to everybody. The last time I tried to do PowerPoint, I didn't have the right software.
I want to take a few minutes of your time, and good tidings. Thank you. A few minutes tonight?
A few minutes is.
Three, four, five minutes.
Thanks. Just kidding.
Thank you.
Okay.
There you go.
I was asked tonight to talk about two things. One is to just kind of bring it up to speed on the wholesale power concept that we, you guys agreed to, I think it was on August 5th. And we finally got all the meters in, and I just handed to, to the town administrator the first invoice. If you remember wholesale power, you have on your electric bill, transmission, distribution, and generation. This is the generation piece. So if you slide to the next page, it's basically a month and a half worth of, of charges. You used about 106,000 kilowatts of power. The bill that I just handed is $6,000. Comes to 5.72 cents a kilowatt hour versus a standard offer of nine cents a kilowatt hour. So you're saving three cents. So the savings in your first, like, month and a half is about 3,500 bucks, or 36.6% savings. Now, 36% is kind of high, and usually the first bills are kind of high. And what I've been seeing in the PSNH territory is anywhere between 18 and 23% savings. So I would expect on your next bill, you'll start to see that come down, because there's some administrative charges that really haven't hit this bill yet. But I would expect you'll see in the 18 to 22% range going forward. PSNH is going to raise their rates, I think, on January 1st to about 9.3 cents a kilowatt hour. So hopefully, the wholesale price stays in the five, six cents kilowatt hour, and you're going to see some substantial savings. So I think this is a pretty good thing. It's money in your pocket.
Yes.
The other thing we wanted to talk about tonight was the forward capacity, and we also talked about a demand response. One of the reasons why it's a little delayed, the programs right now are getting changed. So here's some preliminary concepts about demand response, forward capacity. It's, NEPUL is changing the rules, so we don't know all of the rules, but I can give you some sense of what the potential revenue stream to the town might be. Basically, what that is, is they put a special meter next to your generator, and that if there's a high demand, they will call you up and say, "Hey, you got to turn your generator on to reduce the demand to the grid." Usually, that happens once a year, and it's like two or three hours at a time, and then after that, you shut off your generator, and you're good. You get paid for that capacity to be able to be turned on for two or three hours every month. So you get actually a revenue check to do this. So if you turn to the next page, you'll see we looked at five locations, and it's about 750 kilowatts of power with your different generators. You have Creighton Street, lift station's 200 kilowatts, the wastewater plant is 200 kilowatts, the water treatment plant's 150, police station and a highway garage are 100 kilowatts each. If you turn to the next page, but what I did here is I, at the forward capacity market, I listed all of the locations and generating capacity, and the program pricing is going to change over the next couple of years. So from December 2009, let's say you went forward with it through May of 2010, you would see about $11,000 in revenues to you. And then from June 2010 to May 2011, you would see about $14,000 in revenues, because that dollar amount that they're offering for capacity is going down. And that's from the NEPUL marketplace. In June of 2011 to May 2012, you'd see about $14,000 as well. So over two and a half years, you'd see total revenues of about $39,000. And that's averaging over the two and a half years, about $15,000 a year, for basically having the generators and having to have somebody turn them on, usually in the afternoon, so you probably have somebody hanging around to take care of that. The other good thing is if you do have to turn your generators on, you get the spot market price, which could be 25 cents a kilowatt hour, or 50 cents a kilowatt hour. Or down in Connecticut, I've seen it as high as a dollar a kilowatt hour during these emergencies. So you might have that additional revenue stream coming into you for that one, two-hour time period, times 750 kilowatts. So that's a pretty good chunk of change over two or three-hour timeframe. So if you're interested in moving forward, I think the next thing is we get a contract in front of you guys to kind of look at, to see if it makes sense. What I'd like to do is bring the Freedom Logistics guys in and sit down with the town administrator and really map out, you know, here's how it's going to work, here's what the real costs are going to look like, and confirm that the numbers that I have on this page are, in essence, what the numbers are going to look like.
Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Quox.
Mr. Coffey, if we have to get new meters installed, we have six generators, so it would be six meters.
My understanding from Freedom Logistics is that the meters would be included in the monthly fees that they're charging you. And the numbers that you see here are net of all expenses. So this is the amount of money that you would see in your pocket. The actual monies generated are much higher. There's a $100 a month fee to have the meter online.
For each, each meter, or for all six?
Each meter.
Okay.
Each meter costs, I think, between $1,500 and $2,000, depending on what they need to install.
For the meter itself, and to install it.
Right. So that would be included in the price that they would charge on a monthly basis.
So the addition, additional cost of approximately $1,500 times six.
Right.
Will be in addition to the $100 a month.
That's correct.
Okay. And the, what's the fee for the, and the monthly fee of $100 includes the management of the account and the monthly connection fee?
Right, it includes your meter fee. It includes, because what they're going to do is they're going to put the meter in, and then they're going to charge you, you know, they're going to take that meter cost over 36 months, and whatever that comes to be, let's say it's $100 a month.
Mm-hmm.
Then there's another $100 connection fee, because they have to have it connected to the grid, to, to the power pool.
Is that a one-time fee, or is that monthly as well?
That's monthly fee.
And that's in perpetuity, as long as we're doing this?
That's right.
Okay.
And then there's a management fee on top of that. So what happens is the real fee, let's say the gross fee, revenue stream.
Mm-hmm.
Might be $30,000, but after paying for the electric meter and paying the $100 a month fee, and paying the management fee, you're going to end up with $15,000.
Do you have any idea what the, almost, almost the exact gross, the net fee would be?
Net fee is what you see on that chart. That's what you would see in your pocket.
Now, do we have to have employees go to these areas? Do we have to pay our employees to go every month to turn these generators on and go back in two hours and turn them off? Because that's, that's an additional cost to the town.
Only if there's an addition, a declared emergency from NEPUL. The experience over the last three or four years, it's about one day a year for two to three hours, and it's usually from like 2:00 in the afternoon till 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon. So you might have to have an employee work one extra hour of overtime if your shift is done at 4:00.
For each generator?
Well, you just, the guy just needs to drive from one generator to the next generator to shut it off.
And this, this bottom dollar here, this 15,000 average per year, is turning this, these generators on only once during the year, or every month?
Once during the year. Well, if there's a declared emergency, if there's a declared emergency every month, which is highly unlikely.
But is this based on every month turning them on, or just for the one year?
It's a year.
Once a year?
Usually, there's only one declared emergency, so it would be one time a year. There might be, for some instances, two declared emergencies, so you would have to have a guy do it, do the circuit twice. But the $15,000 a year would be what you would get, if you have that capacity available to use.
I know, but I don't think you answered my question. Is the $15,000 for turning our six generators on once during the year?
Yes. Yes, for declared, what I'm saying is a declared emergency, history has been once per year.
Okay.
Okay, there may be a time that it's going to be twice.
So if it's twice, should we expect to double that $15,000?
No. Because you're, you're, they're paying you for having a capacity available.
Okay.
Now, when you turn it on, you're going to get additional revenues, because you're going to be selling power back to the grid.
Okay.
And that could be 25 cents, 30 cents a kilowatt, or more.
All right. Thanks.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
That's okay.
Counselor Bottomen.
I'd just like to see this brought forward with a proposed contract, or more detail. I mean, it, the only, it's almost a no-lose situation for the town. And I know Rick Malaski's here, but these generators turn on automatically, right? They have automatic transfer switches if the power goes out. So if there's an emergency, they'll turn on, and then we, you know, if the power comes on, they should switch back, correct? So we shouldn't have to send anybody anywhere, unless we get a phone call, and there's not an emergency in town, that we have to go turn it on. So it shouldn't be, that should never happen, virtually.
And it's usually, that's correct.
Once a year.
That's the, that's the history it's been, and it's usually been in the afternoons.
Right.
So I think worst case, it might be one hour of overtime, and the guy's just going to drive around and shut it off.
We just move this to, bring, you know, forward.
Counselor Good? Can we have the contracts prior?
As soon as he can get them in here? Yes.
What I'll do is I'll talk to Freedom Logistics. I would like to have a face-to-face meeting with Freedom and let them go through the contract and talk more specifically about the, how it's going to all work with you, so you have a better understanding.
Yes. Sounds good.
Mr. Chair?
Counselor Fox.
Would it be an RFP, because we're getting over $5,000 on a lease of electric meters? It'd be 700, 700.
We're not purchasing, we're receiving.
But we're leasing, and we're signing a contract for over $5,000 in fees that we are obligated to pay. So how does that work? Do we have to get an RFP on that?
I don't know if there's anybody else that does this.
That's going to be my question.
There are other, a few other companies, big companies, Constellation does it. Let me make this as a suggestion. Why don't we sit down, let's go through the absolute numbers. We can always come back and say, "Here's what the absolute numbers look like." As I said, the rules are changing, so I wanted to give you a sense, because we promised you we would come back and give you a sense of what the potential revenue stream might be. Let's sit down, look at the numbers, and then come up with what that would look like. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, fine. We'll move it to the business meeting.
Might take a little bit longer time to do some of the mathematics. Can I give you a call tomorrow?
Absolutely.
And then I'll, I'll get a meeting set up with Freedom Logistics. Are you available next week?
Yep.
And then we'll sit down, and we'll work that through, and hopefully, we'll have it for the business meeting.
Okay, if, if we cannot, what I would suggest is that we do it in January.
That'd be perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
The first Wednesday in January.
Because of the holidays and stuff like that.
Yep.
Any other questions?
See, that was easy.
Thank you.
You're blessed with money.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Arlen Chaffee, NCDC president, updating the New Market Tomorrow report. Chaffee, good evening.
Good evening. Actually, I'm going to hand it off pretty quickly here. The short story is, is that the.
It's like linked together.
Yeah. That's why I'm just going to stand on the bucket here shortly. But no, the, the NCDC, fingers crossed, on, on the Mills project going through, doing a little naval contemplation, what's the future hold for us? And we don't operate in a vacuum, so we are taking a look at what we might do for projects in the future and called together a subcommittee which stands behind me. You know, Lorian Capioli and John Algren and Mike Provost are our Future Think Subcommittee, kind of taking a look at some of the projects that we might become involved with and other implications out there in town. So I'm going to turn it over to Lorian.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hello, councilors. As Arlen said that Mills hopefully being transferred soon to a developer, we've been talking about what our role would be in the future. And Mike, John and I are the, what we're calling the 2.0 committee. And we kind of had a one quick meeting where we brainstormed some of the things that we thought we should be doing in the future. And the first thing we did was meet with the town, the planning board chair and Mr. Monowski and Diane Harding, the town planner, myself, Arlen, John, and there was two other gentlemen there.
Mike.
I'm sorry. Mike was there, yep. And two other gentlemen, I don't recall. But, um, anyway, we had a good discussion and we talked about what the future might hold for us. And the chairman of the planning board, we made the suggestion that they look at the master plan and look at the economic development chapter, chapter six. The last time it was redone was two thousand and one, I believe. Yes, two thousand and one. And he's going to bring that to the planning board that he may have already and take a vote on whether or not that's something they would do this year. It sounded encouraging. We also talked about having a, maybe asking the council to consider bringing back a tomorrow committee, although I know you just crushed a lot of committees. I don't know if you want to start all over now. Anyway, we think that that would be a great idea and we'd be interested in helping with that and using that outlet to get a public charrette going again. Talk about what, now that some of the things that there was, that was in the first report have been accomplished, the infrastructure downtown, hopefully the Mills being redeveloped, the Riverwalk, possibility of future civic space in the downtown. We thought it might be a good idea to revisit that and not just keep it in the downtown, but broaden it to all of New Market. And we're hoping that the council might be willing to do that. And the NCDC would absolutely support a new, New Market Tomorrow committee and would even be willing to participate and underwrite some of the costs of that exercise. I don't know if John or Mike want to. Sure.
John Algren, Fifty Smith Garrison Row and part of the NCDC. So, once the Mills are done, then the NCDC wonders what we'll do. And I'm, just to take an example, the NCDC does own the parking lot across from the bowling alley. And we've had some preliminary discussions. Well, what should happen with that? And how would we know? What does the town need? What would the town want? How would this be determined? And what different groups in town are stakeholders and want to participate in that? What is the overall concept of, of the mix in town that, that the town people and the, and the town council and the planning board and so forth want? And so we realize that we should not be answering those questions in a vacuum, but rather as part of a process that should go forward. And I, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but there's a pretty good buzz about New Market these days. That, not just in New Market and now in, in surrounding towns, even up in Concord. Look what New Market's done. And so we want to keep it going. The NCDC will be open to opportunities that we have with that one parking lot that we own, but there are other potential projects in town that the council, the planning board and other, other groups, Main Street, may want to, may want to comment about in a public charrette or some kind of professionally supervised process by which we come up with the answers to some of these questions and some, some criteria would, would help the NCDC because we don't, we really need that kind of guidance to answer these questions. And I think that's why we're proposing this. And there, we do have some ability to be, to be supportive financially. And maybe there's, the planning department or town planner can spend some time on this. I don't know what the council would like to allocate in terms of resources, but I do think something should go forward. I think we all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilors, any questions or comments? Councilor Bottomen.
Being the council representative of the planning board, the planning board did discuss the chapter six. And I believe we voted to allow the chairman to put together a committee to start updating it, revising it, so we did do that.
Councilor Quox.
A couple of questions. There are five members in the room that were at the meetings. I was wondering who the two other gentlemen were that were at those meetings? And what their affiliation was with any businesses in town or property owners?
People that were present, from my understanding was Mr. Chaffee, Lorian, the chair, myself, John Badger and Diane Howie. That was it. Those were the only people.
I've been to a lot of meetings. I could be.
Those were the only people.
That's all that was there. There weren't anyone else, okay.
Yeah, we sat around the table.
I've been to a lot of meetings too, but that sounds, that sounds right. I know we were very, you know, we were careful to have one representative from each ward.
Okay.
We didn't want to come, have to go across as, you know, an offsite.
I have more questions, but.
I think the other two people that were supposed to be there were John and I, but were called away for work.
Oh, okay, okay. And another question, is Black Bear Tiff being considered in this discussion? Was it discussed?
That's up to you guys.
But was, that's not what I asked, was it discussed?
We didn't talk about properties or redeveloping, we talked about a tomorrow committee.
Okay. And also the parking lot across the street from the bowling alleys, I thought two people own that. Have they sold that to the NCDC? Somebody bought that a couple of years ago and it's been transferred to the.
There's actually, there's two lots there. There's the coffee kiosk lot and then there's the swamp lot.
Okay.
The coffee kiosk lot, the much improved, better of the two lots, I might say. Belongs to the NCDC.
Okay, that's the one you're discussing?
Correct.
Okay.
And the only other lot that we owned was the parking lot on Bay Lamprey, which we gave to the town.
Exchanged with the town.
Exchanged. The town has it now, just like they've got the dam.
Yes.
Any other comments from any councilors?
Nice ending.
My impression of that discussion was basically, where do we want to go from here? And, and I think that, you know, now's a good time to start thinking about it. So, you know, from, from my vantage point, I, I think that this is something that the council could accept, support, give them some of the resources within reason. I don't know if we need to be more specific about it with resolutions or anything like that or if we can just bring it to the business meeting and, and take a vote on, on supporting the idea, I think.
I have another comment.
Oh. So, I mean, is the council comfortable with that? Just bringing it to a vote at the business meeting as to whether we'll support this or not and go from there, take it, I guess, on a case-by-case situation. Mr. Monowski.
I was just going to ask, within the NCDC, how long do you envision this process taking? I mean, right, at the current time, you know, we're about halfway through the fiscal year and do we want to be building, are we looking to start how much of the process during the balance of this year and then into the next fiscal year so we know whether to build some funds into that?
Basically, as part of this discussion, I was involved in a similar project out in the southwestern part of the state when I worked there in two communities. And it was about an eighteen-month to two-year process by the time it was done. And basically, it's sort of like a community-initiated development process that the community is actually sort of laying out economically where they would like to go, what they would like to see and what their important things are for the next five years, ten years, fifteen years. And, you know, as part of that process, you also look at your infrastructure, what your requirements are. You know, you, you identify properties that are in the town that are developable for commercial or recreational or whatever. And it's, it's really a comprehensive thing that you go through as part of the planning process. So it's not something that's done quickly or lightly, but it's something that's probably would be much more developed than what the town has done to this point as part of the economic development plan. I mean, it's looking at specific components, it's industry and the downtown and whatever and how they all fit into a massive picture altogether. So.
Councilor Bottomen.
I certainly would support, even this year, using the resources of the planning department to, to get the ball rolling. I mean, I think initially you want to look at properties and develop a game plan. I mean, that's what we, in theory, that's what we have a planning department for, to help do that. I think that's a perfect fit. And that wouldn't, I don't think it would cost us anything at this point.
Probably correct. Councilor Quox.
Would we be talking, if we did something like this, would we be talking about extending the Tiff portion, the downtown Tiff, to that section, say, for instance, that particular parking lot where the coffee kiosk is? Is that, would that be considered part of the downtown, i.e. that you could use Tiff monies for?
The, the Tiflar, the RSA is very specific that it is either a percentage of the community or a specific amount of acreage.
Right.
I think that there would have to be a change in the Tiff district in order to expand.
You'd have to amend it.
Yeah, and, and I, and I don't know if that's, I'm assuming that that's not what NCDC's looking. What they're looking at is, let's take a global look at the community and see what we can do, you know, and what does a town want to do in most specific areas and what are the goals that we want to achieve.
And I just want to put, obviously, there's some confusion. We just want to know what the town needs us to do next. That's it. We're not, we're not bringing in developers, we're not hiding properties, we're not doing any of this, you know, stuff. We truly want to know how we can help the town. And Mike talked about community-driven development. I mean, that's what we want to do. That lot that he was talking about with the coffee kiosks is, that's a nice spot for something small and quaint that the town might want. But we don't know what the town wants. And we won't know until someone tells us and we feel it's not our charge to do that. It's your charge, the planning board's charge to do that. We're willing to help, but it, it's not our charge to do that. That's why we're, we're coming to you. Basically, our charge was to develop the Mills.
That's coming to an end.
Further to the point, and then we'll wrap it up, but further to the point on the, the 108 lot across from the, from the bowling alley, we've already been approached a couple, by a couple parties with what we considered subpar, not subpar, but not highest best community interest. And we kind of straight-armed it and said, let, let us, you know, think about it. We don't need to sell the property and it's not just another commercial piece of property. It's something that we can do to leverage into the community. So we're looking to do it, do something like that with it. So, but that's an example. The coffee kiosk lot is a piece of property we happen to own now, but with the sale of the Mills and perhaps the transfer of the coffee kiosk lot, then what do we do after that? And there's, you know, an inventory of the developable parcels around town and what the town, you know, sees for itself into the future. Chapter six, the economic development part of the, of the master plan is very informative, but I think a community-wide exercise is also very helpful as well. And it would probably help with the chapter six too, so it's going to help everyone.
Yep.
Bring it back to the business meeting? Everyone good? I mean, I think it's something that we can go very quickly with.
Do we need to even talk, do we need to?
It would be good to have, you know, to actually have on a vote of support. So let's do it at the business meeting and wrap it up. The gender item. Does that work, Mr. Monowski?
It does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did some ahead, right?
Yeah.
No, let's get at least one more thing done, maybe two, probably two. Next on the agenda, Dana Glenn, chairman of Riverwalk, to discuss future of Riverwalk development. Mr. Glenn.
Thank you, councilors. What I'd like to do, if the council would permit me to do this, is to present to the council a resolution that was given to the town of New Market by Senator Maggie Hassan on October 31st at the ribbon-cutting ceremonies for the gateway to the waterfront. And we're very proud of it. And I probably should have turned it over at the time to Mr. LaBranch, but I guess I wanted to savor the moment. So, basically what it says, a state-owned New Hampshire state senate resolution, be it known that the New Hampshire senate hereby extends its congratulations to the New Market Riverwalk committee in recognition of their success in bringing to fruition New Market, New Ha, New Market's new gateway to the waterfront. And be it further known that the New Hampshire senate extends its best wishes for continued success and that this resolution be duly signed by the president of the senate and assessed to, Maggie Hassan has her signature on it, as well as the president of the senate. And unfortunately, I can't read her writings, so I can't tell you who it is. And it was dated October 31st of 2009 and we would ask that somewhere within the town hall of this would be displayed for the public to view. And I, I want to thank all the members of the Riverwalk committee, as well as, and I'm glad to hear this evening, the conservation people for their work in helping us to achieve the goals that we set forth for the gateway project. So with that being said, I received on November 5th, as I believe all councilors have a copy, a request from the town administrator. And subsequent to that, I received an email from Mr. LaBranch asking that I come before the council this evening to discuss the council, in part here, says, "The council would like you to attend the meeting on November 18th to discuss the continuation of the Riverwalk and the master plan." So I'm assuming how it relates to the master plan, probably where we are within the Riverwalk as far as projects and what's on the, on the agenda. Am I correct on assuming that? Okay, so what I have done is looked at the, I think this piece is wearing out here. Nothing stays up here anymore. So I'll hold it with my hand. I'm referring, when I do speak about this this evening, to the master plan development of the Lamprey Riverwalk dated September of 1997. I will be referencing that as subsequent updates of the master plan that has been done during the last couple of years. The New Market master plan adopted in November 1st of 1994. The vision statement says, mentions the downtown waterfront and Lamprey River as assets to the, to assets to be utilized to their fullest potential. Identify critical areas to protect for, including the town shorelines, surface water bodies and the need to provide access for recreation. It is essential that the public access to Great Bay through state-owned facilities and municipality access to the Lamprey River be preserved. The Lamprey River corridor is recognized as a significant resource. New Market recognizes the importance of protecting and upgrading the Lamprey River water quality and preserving its natural and recreation use. Why I'm going in this direction, it will all tie in at the very end. So if you're saying, you know, why is he reading this, it's all going to tie into the end. The town should protect the quality of water surface and provide for proper recreational use. New residential and commercial development in New Market's downtown Mills should increase pedestrian traffic in coming years. Such increase, such increased pedestrian activity would bring about increased businesses, active and spur new business development, which is why we actually put a lot of money into the downtown to revitalize it. This would, let me see. Also, during that timeframe in November, I don't know if it was actually in November, but it was in the 1993, maybe 92 area. It, it does state here, the community survey, there was a question that was asked to the public. Should the town purchase or protect land for public uses for, or preservation of open space? The response we received was seventy-six percent by the respondents of yes. Waterfront was identified as a favorite place in town to visit or spend time. Water access was identified by seventy-two percent of the community survey respondents as being most important or of some importance. Historic and rural qualities. The village and mill yard have significant potential for attracting tourists. The rural atmosphere with views of Great Bay is significant, is a significant drawing card to those seeking a quality of life not found anywhere else. card to those seeking a quality of life not found anywhere else. Its recommendation, encourage the state and federal governments to improve the boating channels on the Lamprey River and work to create more docks, ramps, and moorings areas along the channel in support of recreational boating and fishing. The master plan, part two. The town of Newmarket Master Plan as of August of 2001. Again, we're still using the other master plan, but there are updates, and these are some of the updates. Chapter six, incorporate the findings on the Newmarket Tomorrow Committee into the master plan. We heard that this evening by Alain Chaffee at the NCDC. Three, the Newmarket Tomorrow Committee consensus items. The mills, waterfront, and downtown are interconnected. Work together on sidewalks, access, parking, infrastructure, capacity, pedestrian safety, and traffic flow. Use design elements to connect the Riverwalk, the mills, and the downtown. It is important to enhance the views of the Lamprey River and Herring Point and to improve access to public spaces along the river. Emphasize the beauty of the Lamprey River, the mills, and Herring Point by providing view sheds and public access to areas such as the Riverwalk. Create new views, access, and public spaces in the mills. Our river frontage and Herring Point are priceless resources for the community. Many of our recommendations center on making this area more accessible and attractive for residents, residents, visitors, and businesses. Its recommendation, support town in efforts to secure public access to the Lamprey River and the vicinity of the downtown. Support efforts to fund and build the Riverwalk. Incorporate pedestrian access to, into the mills, redevelopment, Riverwalk, and other design projects. Coordination of efforts, of efforts. Recognize the Riverwalk Committee and suggest that they have input into the specific design discussions related to the Main Street program. And then in June of 2007, the Newmarket Open Space and Conservation, recognize that access to Great Bay for fishing, hunting, boating, and wildlife as an important public goal. Continue to evaluate and implement opportunities to develop a walking trail network throughout town to connect to open spaces. Maintain improvement in committee relation, related to the, excuse me, maintain improvement in committees related to the Lamprey River and the Riverwalk Committee. And Herring Point, continue to work to tie in with the Riverwalk, Riverwalk project, can't say that, that's too many times. Determine opportunities to acquire rights or ownership for pedestrian access. Develop integral design plan for entire system. Seek acquisition of interverting properties or gain, gaining pedestrian access across these properties. And then there's a small section of the water resource, water resource master plan updated on September 9th of this, this year. And in their conclusion, it does state, work with the Riverwalk Committee in order to do the design work and completing the Riverwalk project. So, that's where it fits into the master plan itself. Now, I'd like to give the council, unless the council has questions on this portion of our whole law.
Any questions for any councilors? Councilor Barman.
Can I ask a question about access? We have the boat ramp that is owned by the state, right? We have the parks that's constructed down there. As part of the mill process, project, they, we're going to have a riverfront access there, correct?
Well, clearly.
We're going to have access from the mills, part of the mills project.
On the Chinburgs.
They're going to have a public, public access, they're going to have a public spot where people can gather and whatnot.
I think that's the plan on the Chinburg side?
Yes.
At the moment?
Yes, yes. So, but between those two, between the boat ramp and where?
Rivermore?
Where the Chinburg project is, there's a gap that is owned by Rivermore Landing.
Right, that is correct.
Right? And at this point, we have, my understanding is, we have no access through there at this point.
No access has been given at this point.
Right, okay.
Nor have we had any discussions with the Rivermore Landing. However, I do have a letter dated back in February, I believe, of 2007, when I was serving as the chairman. We did set up a meeting with the Board of Directors of the Rivermore, Rivermore Association. And I believe that that time Julie Glover was with me and the town planner Diane Hardy. We did approach them, see where they were with that, and I believe sincerely, they were not receptive to it. And I think at that time, it was, and I, going out on a limb here by saying this, is that there was bad blood between the administration at that time and the association. Since then, and I have always said this, that what we needed to do was to pull back, which is what we did as a committee, and wait for, I, one of the things that would happen would be a new, probably some turnover within the organization, the Board of Directors, and there may be some new tenants moving in, homeowners, people that would buy it. So it would change. However, there is a clause somewhere in there, condo regulations, that it has to be 100% buy-in on whatever happens within the association of the first-time mortgage holders of the property, of those units. So, that creates the dilemma, yes. However, in the scheme of things, we have not, as a committee, thoroughly identified the next phase of what we're going to be looking at. And we're doing that intentionally because a lot of, well, actually, all the members feel that you really can't go there as another phase, a five, phase five, which we would be going on to, until we know what happens with the mills, until we know what Chinburg is going to do with the Rivermore Association. So we really can't be looking at that. What we can do is looking for funding through the CIP program. And we know the economy is bad, we know things are tight, we understand that. But right now, what we need to do is to start putting some funds away, to start building up that nest egg, nest egg again, to meet the challenges that we're going to have down the road, which is to seek funding. And in most cases, funding has to be matched, either 50/50 match or somewhere there's a match. And at this point, it doesn't appear that we have any money within the CIP for that. And I'll explain that to you, is with the Water Street portion, let me back up. Shanda Park was phase one. Serviettes property, which is the old Joyce's Kitchen, is phase two. Phase three is the Water Street project. Phase four is the Arbor Park, and I'll get into what's happening with that. And then phase five is out there. Now, we can go on the right of Shanda Park, over towards the, the DPW area or the fishing game area. We can go that way, or we can go the other way. And there's even some talk of trying to connect, as you saw in the master plan, to connect the Riverwalk to Herring Point. That's a challenge. Is it something we can't do? We don't know yet until we start exploring the possibilities of that. So, what we have done so far is there's been very, very tight with our money. The Water Street project was estimated to cost about $137,000. Let's take this right here. About $137,000. The project came in under budget, which is about $118,000 to $120,000. I did check with Julie Glover today, she holds those magical numbers for us. And there's a couple amenities we need to get a bench and the trash barrel, those probably won't come until next spring. So we're estimating right now, on the Water Street project, we were able to save $17,000. What we're looking to do with that $17,000, because it is part of the Riverwalk overall project, is to tie that into the existing funds that we have for the Arbor Park. Now, some of you are probably wondering in mind, what's happening, what the, what the public is probably wondering, what's happening with the Arbor Park? The Arbor Park is not complete, we know that. Our goal is to get it complete by late spring, early summer. The problems we're having there are funding. For the last two years, we have asked the CIP Committee, and I was on the council, and asking for funding of $25,000, because there's a history going back probably eight or nine years that the CIP, when economic times were good, to fund the CIP program for the Riverwalk up $25,000. Two years ago, we got $15,000. Last year, we got $5,000. This year, we're coming back and requesting for the next two years, $25,000 for each year, so we can start building that up to get those funds to meet the challenges of applying for grants. Now, there are areas out there the grants have dried up, but I do have a list here of where some of those grants could come from. I know I have it here somewhere. I asked Julie Glover, and I think actually Diane did this, the town planner did this for us, Riverwalk funding grant opportunities, New Hampshire Coastal Program through DES. Now, we have heard from the Coast Bus Program and Coast Program that we can no longer go back to the well to get monies. However, they have put us in touch with another entity through, through the federal government, I believe it is, that communities that have projects that are currently underway and don't have the funding, no new projects, and this is not a new project, this is an ongoing project, as recognized by the coastal program, that this is an ongoing project, and they will, this new entity will fund up to $100,000 once we apply, if we get approved, however, that requires matching funding. So if we're going to seek $100,000, we're going to come up with $50,000 for that, as well as what we did for phase one, phase two. We had matching funding for those projects. Land and Water Conservation Fund, National Park Services, River Trails and Conservation Assistance Program, Conservation License Plate Program, it won't be a whole lot of money, but if you start tying these together, they can add up to a substantial amount of money. With the Arbor Park itself, part of the reason why it hasn't been completed is much strictly financial. There are other issues there, too. What we have been trying to do, because we have limited funds, and I'll just go over that with you, if we take the $17,000 that we're not spending on the gateway to the waterfront and add that to a grant that was given to the town from the coastal program of $20,000 two, three years ago? Two years ago, Mike? Two years ago. That was given to us two years ago, which we had to come up at the 11th hour, 20% matching funds. So creatively, Diane Hardy, myself, and others went to Timberland. Timberland graciously gave us a grant or donation of $4,000. The Newmarket Gardeners contributed X number of dollars to this project also. So we had then the monies that we needed to do as a matching funds. So we did receive that, and I believe that was under Al Dixon, he was the chair at the time of that particular committee. So we got the funding. So as we stand today, out of the $20,000, $8,000 some odd dollars was used for a fence for the perimeter of the Arbor Park. So it left us with a balance of 16, approximately, these are all approximate, by the way, $16,000 plus the $17,000. So right now, we have $32,000 somewhere in that area in the account to finish the Arbor Park. What we did by working with members of the community, such as the Newmarket Main Street some years ago, they were willing to fund up to $2,000 for an architect to do a design concept of what the Arbor Park would look like. And we told the individual at the time, the designer, Charlie Hoyt, that we only had approximately $25,000 to $30,000 to work with. Unfortunately, he came in with a plan at about $110,000 to $120,000. So we've had to cut back, cut back, cut back, to the point now, we have approximately $32,000 to work with. So we know that's not going to finish the project if we're going to do it according to the design. The design, again, was scaled back. To give you an idea, and I think some of you councilors have seen this, not all of you, because some of you are new. This is somewhat what the plan was supposed to be envisioned, as we look at it. This here currently is all grass. There's been some discussion, there's been some discussion, probably putting some type of pavers in there because of the problem with the dogs and everything else that was going on. And since then, we kind of went back to the grass, because there are signs up there, no dogs allowed. However, we're not sure how that's going to work. And there was going to be pavers coming in through here. By the way, this is something that's already been approved by the council, two councilors ago, I believe, when Brian Hart was the chairman. So that, what has not been approved is the release of the funds from the TIF to pay for it. And we're not coming to you for that until we figure a way how to pay for it. What we have been doing, thinking very creatively with Mike Provo here and other members of our committee, was how do we get these two entities here, the side structures, to be turned into kiosks, which is something the Main Street Corporation helped fund the design concept with the idea of these would be turned into kiosks? A lot of money to do that. Not tear them down, but just put in the shingles there to have it look like what's currently on the mills, the cupola, such as the cedar shingle finished with a rock base on the bottom here. So, in order to cut that cost, we decided we would try a couple approaches. One, to get a hold of the Exeter School that has a, and I cannot think of the name, but you know the name of that program?
SST.
Vocational is another acronym for it.
SST.
SST, yeah, SST. So I had a conversation with them, and they really work within their own areas of Exeter. So that kind of ruled them out. Then we went to the high school, I spoke with the superintendent Mark LaRoche, had a conversation with Chris, the principal, and that created a problem for them. They would love to have done it, they were more than willing to do it, but the periods are 90 minutes long, take 20 minutes to get here, 20 minutes to get back, and there really wouldn't be a whole lot that would get done. Another member of the committee came up with the idea and did do the contract work, the legwork, to the state of New Hampshire prison, to see if we can get some of them, because they have such a program to come down and do things like that. But in this case, we'd have to put both of these units on the back of a flatbed and bring it up to Conquet to have them work on it. So that was cost prohibitive for us to do that. So we're still exploring ways of trying to not impact the taxpayers. However, we're looking at this and saying, to do it and do it right, how much more can we scale it back without having the vision that we had all originally had, you know, hope for? So, by telling you that is to let you know that we're still ongoing, we have some other opportunities that we can explore. One of them would be probably with Timberland. I was approached this past August by Timberland and asked about Servapalooza, which is a program they do every year in, in September. However, we didn't have enough projects. And I had worked with Rick Malaski with the EPWC, if there's any projects there. And I believe we had contacted the Conservation Commission people with Herring Point. But they changed their, not quite, well, I guess you could say criterias. Before, they would send 25 to 50 people. Now they're looking to send 100 people to the community. Two years ago, when we did it here in Newmarket, it was extremely difficult to find enough work to keep 100 people going. So, we didn't qualify, so we didn't get the help. However, there's other ways within Timberland that we might get some assistance from them. So we're looking, going back to the drawing board, trying to get this project done so that, and while we're doing this, by the way, we just completed one, we're working on this one, and we're looking towards the future, to where we might go, whether it be to the right, to the left. But we do know that we can't go to the left until we know fully what's happening with Chinburg and that developer with the mills. So.
So, Mr. Glennon, if I may, it seems as though you've given us an overview of where you've been, where you're headed and everything, and I guess at this point, it would probably be best if we open it up to the council to see if the council has any questions or, or ideas or suggestions or anything. So, Councilor Quox.
Well, Mr. Glennon was asked to come here tonight because it's been a question as to whether or not we should consolidate his committee with another one, the Downtown TIF or whatever. And I think in, in what he's explained to us tonight and what they've accomplished and what they still have to do, that it's a viable committee. It's working very well on its own, and it should continue on its own until the, the projects are finished. I think it would just be hindered if it was combined with any other committees.
If I could address that, we did have that discussion within the Riverwalk Committee. I had brought that up as the topic. And it was a unanimous vote that they felt that we should stay alone as a separate committee. The thought process there was the TIF is regulated by RSAs where the Riverwalk is actually by resolution. The Clock Committee probably, and the opinions were given at our meeting, that that whole entity should, the Clock should go under the Heritage Advisory as it is part of the historical makeup of the town. And we feel strongly that we should be an independent committee and that it would be difficult for us to take on any other challenges at this point.
Any other councilors? Councilor Bottomen?
I think to be fair to everybody that's listening, when Mr. Glennon said that last year the CIP cut, I think last year they were looking for $50,000 and it was cut to $5,000, I believe, something of that effect. Looking for 25, cut to 5,000. I was on the CIP, and I believe I made the motion to cut it, not because I, not in favor of a Riverwalk, but because of the economic times we're in.
We understood that.
And the, the Riverwalk is, you know, it's a, it's a want and it's not a need. So, I just wanted to be, to be clear on that.
Any other councilors? With the council's intelligence, could we take a quick five-minute break?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just, I just need to take a five-minute break. I'm, no, it's me, okay.